Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for August 21st, 2018. If we could please call the roll.
Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Thank you. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, additions, deletions, Mr. Reynolds?
Just a couple, Mayor Mars. First, we have a couple additions on your table that relate to Tiff District 20 and 21. These are minor revisions that will be explained later, including a date and then inclusion of some county information that was provided this morning. And that will be discussed when we hit those issues. The other thing is, is I would like to ask the leave of the mayor and council to put 4.1, a special presentation after consent business and before recognition of involved citizens by city council, if I may.
4.1?
Correct, after consent business. And it would be a special presentation.
Okay.
Councilor Whiting? I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as modified.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Moving ahead to item number four. Consent agenda before us. Are there any changes, corrections, deletions? Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir.
Mr. or Councilor Whiting?
I'd like to remove 4C2, please.
4C2. Councilor Mokel?
And I would see if we could add 10A1 to the consent agenda.
Monthly financial review. Councilor Lehman?
Move the modified consent agenda.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Whiting. Before we vote, we would read the modified consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mayor Mars and members of council. These are the consent agenda items for August 21st of 2018. 4A1 approves the minutes of the August 8, 2018, meeting. 4B1 declares seven forfeited vehicles held by the police department as surplus property and authorizes their proper sale or disposal. 4C1 adopts Resolution Number R2018-TAC089, which accepts work on the 2017 bituminous overlay improvement project, Number 2017-TAC2, and makes a final payment of $50,561.14. 4C3 accepts quotes and awards a contract to Gopher State Seal Coat Incorporated for the 2018 Trail Seal Coat Project in an amount not to exceed $40,958.50. And finally, 10A1 is the monthly financial review.
Thank you. The modified consent agenda has been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Now I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come forward on an...
4.1.
4.1, the special presentation.
Oh, 4.1. I apologize. Thank you. An add on the agenda, 4.1, for a special presentation. Mr. Reynolds?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if I could have Chief Tate, please, join us here in the council chambers. Mr. Mayor and members of council, this is Chief Tate's 20th year with the City of Shakopee. And I can tell you that, and I've said this publicly quite a bit, that there is no finer law enforcement community that I've ever been associated with than what we have here in Shakopee. And there's a lot of reasons for that. But probably the most important thing is the leadership of that organization. And I just would like to take this opportunity to provide Chief Tate with his 20-year recognition package from the City of Shakopee. Chief, appreciate all the hard work you do. You run an incredibly fine organization, and I'm extremely proud to serve with you. Thank you, sir.
Please speak into the mic, please. Thanks, Chief.
It's hard enough to walk up here. It has been a great 20 years. It's gotten really, really quick. Feels like just yesterday I started and I was thrown out on a dog watch and all by myself, and I was the only officer. My first week off FTO, I was the only officer in the whole city working. So the city has definitely changed in those 20 years. But this is, I owe a lot to the city. This has been a fantastic organization to work for. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your service to our community. All right. Thank you for that special presentation. Now, moving ahead to now I'd like to call on any resident that would like to speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. And welcome on an item not on the agenda. Seeing none, we will move ahead then to business removed from consent. And we have 4C2 and Councilor Whiting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a discussion on a constructive cooperative agreement with Scott County for the four flashing pedestrian crossings on County Road 16. One at Lutzitano Street for Jackson Elementary, one on Shire Street for the high school, one on Dublin Lane for Sun Path, and one on England Way for Shakopee area Catholic schools. Now, we've had a lot of discussion about these pedestrian crossings, and I think it's important that we get these projects done for the safety of the kids. But the way this was brought through, we had some discussions. I know we have a cooperative agreement, or we will, with the cost-sharing portion of this. But it would have been nice to have a little bit more of a plan from the county level in order to put this into our planning for paying for it. I know they gave us a grace period and I, till next year's budget. But I have some concerns about how that's done, and I'd like to see a little bit better communication from the county for projects like this, so we can plan better for them. Now, it's a county road. I would think that the county would be responsible for paying for it. But I know we do share for some of those projects. But just the way it came about was a little startling to me, but I do support it.
All right. Thank you. Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, while I may agree with Councilor Whiting, I'd like to point out that this is a two-way street. I think the county probably feels the same way on the Canterbury Tiff. We had a letter in hand Monday. We voted on it Tuesday, and their letter was basically asking us to consider Tiff dollars, a portion of the Tiff dollars, for what they viewed as their needs on 83 because of that project. So I think what we're finding is where we don't have this partnership with other entities of government that we strive to have. And that's a two-way street.
Don't disagree.
Just speak on this a little bit. I know that this has been a discussion point for the last six months, at least, with the county. And they were going to phase it in and doing their analysis and trying to pick a type of facility that would be matching throughout our community. And instead of phasing, they actually stepped up in the community to get this done right away. And how it came about may have caught us a little bit. But really, I look at it and go, this, the street crossings by our schools have been an issue for a while. And to get it all done at once, they're giving us an opportunity to pay for it in '19. We're interjecting that into our budget this year. But we just were talking to the county the other day, and actually, in the end, as much as it may have ruffled, it actually, I feel like it worked out in a positive way in the end. And it is about working together. And I'm actually glad, I think, we'll look back in a year and have these all in place, rather than one one year, one another year, and then take, you know, four or five years to do it. And sometimes that's actually the way to do it, so.
I thought they wanted to get them in place by September.
Well, they do. But my point is, they were looking at a phasing over a couple years.
And as much as I want to agree with everyone, I think the point, I think Mr. Whiting was making is that, or Councilor Whiting, is that it came about quickly, but yet we've known about the problem for a long time. And it took an accident for us to kind of facilitate to where we are today. And I think that's unfortunate. But I agree. I think that they could have given us a little more warning as far as we both knew what was going on. We should have been working towards this for quite a while, so.
Councilor Lehman?
I'm going to offer a resolution entering into construction cooperative agreement with Scott County for four flashing pedestrian crossings along County Road 16, also known as 17th Avenue, and move for its adoption.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Luce. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Moving ahead then to 7A, public hearing on soil condition Tiff plan for Shakopee crossings. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Council Mokel?
I make a motion to open a public hearing.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Luce. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, the public hearing is open. Michael, welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council. If it's okay with the council, I know we have two public hearings, but Springstead's combined them both in the one presentation. And Mr. Dunaway just mentioned that these are numerically in order. So Tiff Number 20 is actually 7C, and Tiff Number 21 is actually 7A. So he asked if he could do them together. If that's okay with the council.
Is that legal?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, yes, you can do it, but you should open the public hearing also now on 7C. Hold two public hearings at once. Right now, you've only opened one, so you should open the second one.
Okay. Councilor Mokel?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for 7C.
Okay. I have a second by Councilor Luce. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. We have two public hearings open. Michael?
Thank you, mayor and council. So these are little unusual Tiffs. We've never done a soil Tiff. They're not very common in the state of Minnesota. So Mr. Dunaway will try and answer your questions. But to clarify, the statute's pretty broad. We would propose that this Tiff for soils be used for remediation on the site. It allows, for instance, the city or a private property owner to acquire contaminated property and clean it up. We would say that the $2 million that's the present value of that Tiff would be used towards the soil remediation on that property. The downtown Tiff is going to be used for excavating out the former foundations of the city hall, showing up the sidewalk and the railway, so they don't collapse into the hole, removing the rest of the bedrock on that site, so that they can meet what is considered a parking shortage in downtown. They'd be able to 100% park their building, and then rebuild the sidewalks to the new standard on Second Street and all the way down Homes, and also pave the alley in concrete when it's all done. So there's some pretty substantial public improvements that would come out of that project. After the public hearing, the developer for both of them are here. Mr. Soltow is here for the soils Tiff, and Austin Morris is here representing Enclave Development from Fargo. So if you have any specific questions on their projects, I'll turn it over to Mr. Dunaway.
Questions of staff, Michael?
Yes, thank you.
Councilor Lehman?
The District 20 downtown, the alley to the east was assessed. And then the alley where the post office is, was that alley assessed, or was that not assessed?
Mayor and council, yes, that was assessed.
So two alleys were assessed, this alley would not be?
Mayor and council, we have not gotten to the, in September, you'll see the development agreement for the private development portion, which is how the money gets split out. We're proposing that the developer pay for out of the Tiff, the concrete alley, the reconstruction of Second Avenue from Homes over, and then all of Home Street to First.
So you're proposing no assessments for the alley on the businesses, consistent with what happened to the east?
That would be correct.
Okay. And then one last question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you know what the differences are between what was on the table today and what was in the packet as far as the financing plan? Or do I have to ask the other folks?
Mr. Dunaway and Ms. Eddington are here. There were some grammatical corrections that we put in. The county actually didn't object to either of the districts. They just wanted to make sure that on the soils district, that if they get into the right of way, that they get a permit for the right of way. And then there was a comment added in by the attorneys that you all had passed a previous resolution authorizing the demolition of City Hall, because that's required by statute to include in the Tiff agreement.
All right. Thank you. Welcome.
Howdy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Tom Dunaway. I'm with Springstead Incorporated. And I want to begin with, yeah, with a maya culpa that there was a late delivery of updated Tiff plans for both these Tiff projects. There was a delay in us turning around comments received from Kennedy and Graven and updating the reports to send those in. They were very minor technical language corrections provided by Kennedy and Graven that we incorporated. The only change, there was probably a couple of small language changes, and I don't have a red line in front of me, otherwise I couldn't show you specifically. But with Tiff 20, there was probably a couple of language changes within the Tiff plan. And then, as well as the addition of the executive summary from the BLIGHT study, was included as an exhibit to the Tiff plan. None of the numbers changed, and none of the proposed development terms changed. Everything else was consistent with the prior iteration of the plan. It was just a couple legal grammatical changes largely that were incorporated into the updated version of the plan, similarly with Tiff 21. With Tiff 21, we also did receive input from the county regarding the proposed base value of the district. We did not change the Tiff plan to accommodate that, but the actual base value of that district will be less at $2 million market value as opposed to what was in the Tiff plan. When we drafted the Tiff plan, we were using information that was provided by the county GIS and property tax system that included a property valuation for the larger of the two parcels that was subsequently changed at tax court. And that change had not occurred or been updated within their system. So it wasn't apparent to us that there was a lowering of that value, so it wasn't incorporated within the Tiff plan. And we didn't really frankly know about it today until we saw the letter from the county. And we followed up with them, and that's why there was a, the letter or the comment within the county letter. When it comes to the creation of that Tiff district, the actual certified value or base value of that district will be frozen at the time the district's certified, and it'll generate slightly more increment a little bit faster. The total budget for that Tiff district won't change. It will still be the amount that's shown within the Tiff plan, because we've gone through the process to get to this point. So that district may pay off just slightly faster than proposed within the Tiff district. But we can get more into that later when we talk about Tiff 20. So I, excuse me, about Tiff 21. So I wanted to just give a brief presentation tonight for the public hearing for both of these Tiff districts. To begin with, I want to go over tax increment finance and provide a quick overview, more for the public's insight as opposed to yours. You've seen this presentation from me and other people at my firm a couple times this year already. So we did want to just kind of hit some of the high points again, just so that the public that might be interested in these projects is aware of the Tiff background. I'll try to be brief, as brief as I can be. And then we'll get more into those project specifics, and I'll probably pause for questions between the two projects and move forward between each, getting into the second Tiff district. So you can see here what we're going to go over. And then just to begin with, what is Tiff? Tiff is a method of capturing tax-based growth resulting from the new development. So Tiff captures the future tax, or the future tax revenue that would be generated by the new development on that site and uses it to pay for public improvements related to that development. There's a fixed term for the capture of those future tax increment revenues, and then the new development gets added to the tax base. Tiff is defined by state statute, 469-174 to 469-1799. The purpose of Tiff is to serve as a gap financing tool, to make projects happen that would not otherwise happen. There's a test or an understanding that goes on with the creation of a Tiff district, and that is that project would not occur but for the requested assistance. So the idea is that we're providing an incentive for development to make development happen that would not otherwise happen. We're fundamentally seeking to remove financial barriers that are present on a site that make development on that site not feasible. So depending on the year created, there's different compliance requirements for the type of Tiff district, and depending on the type of Tiff district, there's different criteria that have to be in place for the creation of a district. For redevelopment districts, you have to have a blighted property and a concentrated development. You have to have development that has buildings on it, or a development site that has buildings on it. And those buildings do have to be blighted as per the definition within statute. And we'll talk about that specifically for Tiff 20 in a little bit, and that has a 25-year term. The other district that we're looking at is a soils conditions district. So that has to have a contaminated soils, have to be present on the site, and it has collection for a period of 20 years. And it's important to remember here that the terms that we're talking about are based on the way statute is written, which is the number of years of collection from the first receipt of Tiff. So it's all these years plus one. So a redevelopment district is 25 years from the first receipt, or 26 total collections. And a soils condition is 20 years from the first receipt of increments, so 21 total, 21 total collections. So when we talk about Tiff, we talk about what are we eligible, what is Tiff eligible to be used for? So statute has been continually refined over the years to limit the ways that Tiff can be used by cities and what are eligible expenditures of that Tiff revenue. So there's public improvements, land acquisitions, soil corrections, site prep, demolition, relocation, financing fees and capitalized interest, and as well as the city can retain 10% of the Tiff revenue for administration of that district. And when it comes to the city retaining administrative expenses or retaining that 10%, it has to be for costs specific to the administration of that district, and a record has to be keep of what those costs are. And increment that's collected, under that 10% retention, that's not used for that, could then also be used to repay the district earlier than originally planned if there's not eligible administrative expenses. But it is documented expenses that have to be kept and recorded and audited by the Office of the State Auditor if they so choose. So unfortunately, it just can't be used for general fund expenses. It has to be for documented, defined uses. Similarly, when we talk about the ability to use Tiff for public improvements, there's limits on the types of public improvements that we can use Tiff for. It can be for streets and roads, utilities, bridges and interchanges, parking, sidewalks and walkways, and then soft costs, engineering costs related to those types of expenses. We can't use Tiff for general government use buildings. We can't use Tiff for city halls, fire stations, parks, and the like. So when we talk about Tiff, we're talking about a future source of revenue. We're talking about revenue that's going to be generated over the next 21 to 26 years, depending on the type of district. So when it comes to that future revenue, we're talking about a revenue source that's going to be coming in the future, but we're talking about costs that are going to be incurred today. So there's two ways we can go about incurring or financing those costs today and using that future Tiff revenue to pay for them. There's two options. One is using a pay-as-you-go basis, and the other is the use of general obligation tax increment bonds. When we talk about Tiff districts, when we talk about pay-as-you-go notes, or pay-as-you-go form, or the pay-as-you-go system, the developer will be incurring those costs today, and they'll be reimbursed over time as the project generates Tiff revenue, tax increment revenue. So the developer will be paying for those public improvements. It'll be reimbursed by tax increment over time, and that reimbursement is limited to the amount of Tiff collected. So if tax increment revenue comes in at a lesser rate or a lesser amount than originally projected, the developer bears that risk. Conversely, with tax increment bonds, the city would be taking on that risk. They would be issuing the debt now, and they'd be using future tax increment revenue to repay that debt. For the projects tonight, we're talking about, both of the projects would be pay-as-you-go Tiffs. So they would be, the developer would be responsible for funding the improvements, and they'd be getting reimbursed over time with the future Tiff revenue. So how is a Tiff district created? First, the city has a development district. The city has a development district that is in place. And part of the reason why we're talking about Tiff 21st is because as part of the adoption of Tiff 20, the development district will be modified. The development district has a boundary that is approximately the northern half of the city. So as part of the modification of the development district, tonight, we'd be making the boundaries of that development district co-terminus with the boundaries of the city as a whole. Most cities have a Tiff, have a development district that is the city boundaries. It's just the easiest way to go about doing it. Within a development district, then, you can create individual Tiff districts, and then those Tiff districts can pool revenue within the development district itself amongst various districts if there's available funds. So it's best just to have the development district be the city boundaries as a whole. With the creation of a Tiff district, you create or draft a Tiff plan that sets the budget, the geographic boundaries, and the purpose for the Tiff district. So we have two Tiff plans in front of you tonight that define, that provide information regarding each of those purposes. We hold a public hearing, which has been, which is what we're here doing. And then following the public hearing, if the city were to approve the creation of the district, we would certify it with the county. So the process is approximately 60 days, includes notifications to the county and school district. Those have to be done 30 days prior to the public hearing. The publication of the hearing notice, which has to be done 10, no less than 10 days prior to the public hearing, and no more than 30. The planning commission reviews both of the developments to find that they conform to the city's overall plan for development as a whole. And then we have to ultimately hold a public hearing. So that's the little bit that I'm going to spend on tax increment financing as an overview, and we'll get into the projects now. So Tiff 20 contemplates the redevelopment of the city hall, or the former City Hall site. The redevelopment is proposed to contain an 82 market rate apartment building with 2,500 square feet of retail space and 113 units of structured parking. In addition to undertaking the project, the developer will also be undertaking necessary demolition and site costs related to development of the site. So here, you can see the boundaries of the proposed Tiff district, and it would also include all adjacent right-of-ways. So in order for that Tiff district to be eligible to be a redevelopment Tiff district, over 70% of the parcels have to be occupied. You can see in that, you can see on the prior plan here that there's only one parcel within the district in that district where that building was occupied by a building, and the city did adopt a resolution finding that building blighted previously. So more than 50% of those buildings, in this case, the one building on the site, were deemed to be structurally substandard to a degree requiring substantial renovation or clearance. The city previously adopted a resolution making that finding a man of demolishing that building. When you guys made that, or adopted that resolution, you made that finding, which maintained the eligibility to then come back at a later date, such as today, to hold a public hearing to create that Tiff district. That, adopting that resolution, did start a timeframe that gave you three years within which you could create a Tiff district on that site and still maintain that eligibility. So the property within the Tiff district was inspected, and it was determined to qualify for the creation of a redevelopment Tiff district, and that was verified and approved by the city council at a prior date. So redevelopment Tiff allows for the use of 25% of the Tiff funds to be spent on public improvements or administrative costs outside the Tiff district area. That's where that larger development district comes into play. And then 90% of the Tiff revenue has to be used for purposes of correcting conditions that allow the district to be qualified as a redevelopment district. Those include acquiring property, demolition, clearing of land, installation of utilities, roads, sidewalks, and parking facilities. And additionally, the city's administrative expenses are eligible under that 90% test. So redevelopment districts have a term of 25 years from the receipt of first increment. So when we put together the Tiff plan assumptions, we made various assumptions regarding the type of development that was going to occur and the amount of taxes that would be generated by the development. So again, 82 market rate apartments, 2,500 square feet of retail space, 113 units of structured parking. We assumed a per mark, or per unit market value of $150,000 per apartment unit, as well as $150 per square foot market value for the restaurant or the retail portion. So the TIF plan does not assume any future market value inflation, so if market value inflation occurs on the site, it's going to generate TIF at a greater rate than is proposed in the plan, and it will shorten the term of the district and the repayment period of the TIF note. So that's one of the things we do when we generally do when we create these TIF districts, is we try to use that as a hedge, to try to shorten the term of the repayment of the TIF district. So the TIF eligible tax rate that's set by the current tax rate, combined tax rate for the city, county, school district, as well as the other miscellaneous taxing entities, is 130, almost 131%, and that's the current tax rate for those entities. The first receipt of increment has been delayed, is requested to be delayed until 2021 to include all construction that would occur between 2018 and 2019, so the first year of tax increment revenue in '21 would be based off the completion of the project in 2019, which would be assessed in 2020, generating taxes payable in 2021. So the final receipt of TIF, if it, if it were to take the full term, would be proposed to be 2046. So the budget that's proposed within the TIF plan identifies approximately $2,132,400 worth of net present value for the reimbursement of eligible expenses within the TIF district. Additionally, we've proposed the inclusion of interest expenses on reimbursement of that of 2.3 million at an interest rate of 5%, and administrative expenses of $525,000. And we've also set aside a budget authority for demolition and remediation to reimburse the city for demolition costs already incurred on the site of $250,000, bringing the total budget for the TIF district to 500, five, or $5,252,286. Important to remember tonight is when, with the adoption of a TIF district, is we're just creating the authority for the city council to enter into future obligations. We don't have a development agreement in front of you yet, that would come back at a later date. So if you were to choose to act on the TIF district tonight, you would just be creating the authority to enter into future obligations for the city that would allow the reimbursement of expenses as cited within the budget. So tonight's the first step in a process that would ultimately be a two-step approval process. This would create authority, and then later, at a later date, you will have the, the specific development agreement brought within, brought in front of you that would identify the specific items that would be, be used for reimbursement. Similarly, the total tax increment revenue for the, for the TIF district is projected to be $5,252,286. So again, the next steps for this district would be the, if you so choose, would be the approval of the TIF district plan that would provide you with the authority to enter into future development agreements. You would do that by adopting the resolution approving the tax increment financing plan and a modified redevelopment plan for the Minnesota River Valley Housing and Redevelopment Project Number One, that last part, that, that's the development district. And then at a future date, you would review the development agreement and the specific terms of the assistance. So I think with that, I'll pause for questions on TIF 20 before getting into TIF 21.
Questions of our consultant? Counselor Lehman?
Couple of questions for you. The reimbursement over time with interest, the interest that you have on your slide, is that equal to the interest rate that it costs the developer to finance this up front? Or is it just a set rate, and if they get it lower somewhere else, they're going to make a buck on the interest?
That is a rate that, right now, the, the rate that's in the TIF plan is an estimate. So we just, for purposes of the TIF plan, assumed, I think it was 5%, let me double check this here. But that's a specific term that would be negotiated as part of the development agreement. So right now, we have budget authority based off an estimated interest rate, but the actual amount would be set and negotiated between the city and the developer. And to that point, when we do those negotiations, we do typically seek to set that interest rate at their private borrowing rate, with the idea being that we don't want to have them borrowing at, say, 4.5% and the city reimbursing them at 5.5% and them receiving arbitrage on, on additional interest revenue or interest expenses that they weren't occurring.
Right.
So the idea is that we will set that at the rate that they will be borrowing at privately in order to prevent that and, and ensure that we're not over reimbursing them for their interest expenses.
Second question?
Yep.
The 60-day notification of the school and the county, is, is there approval needed or just notification?
It is just notification, and the interest rate that the, the TIF plan did, did use was 5% was the interest rate, just to clarify.
5%?
Yep.
Okay.
So it's a 30-day notification requirement for the county and school district, and it is only that we have to provide them with a copy of the TIF plan 30 days prior to the public hearing. There's no approval process for them or no requirement from them to seek approval of the, of either of their, from either of the entities, just that they have an opportunity to provide comment.
We're, we're capturing their future tax dollars off the property, both the school and the county, correct?
Yes, the, the proposed development or the proposed TIF plan does capture the future development that would create tax, or tax revenue applicable to their tax rates, yes.
We're denying them the tax revenue they would otherwise receive off the property if there was not a TIF.
If the development were to occur outside of a TIF district, that, that could be the case, but again, the fundamental finding with the TIF district is that the project would not be likely to occur but for the requested assistance.
Counselor Lehman, it's, it's not a denial. We notify them. Also, we have the superintendent of the school district saying that this is, these are minimal.
Right, but the, the board didn't actually vote on it, so they don't, we don't need their approval.
It's not a denial.
Okay, so the next question, if I may?
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
The, so the same with Canterbury or any TIF district that's gone out for years, any city, county, or school district services required for, to serve that site, them costs then are borne by the rest of the taxpayers?
Yeah, that would be an impact of the creation of a TIF district, is that the servicing of a property within a TIF district, the cost of that does get borne against the general tax base as a whole, because there's not an offsetting amount of tax base being created by the project. The one caveat to that is, and particularly with school districts, is that a significant portion of their revenue comes from the referendum market value taxes. When it comes to tax increment revenue, the portion of value that's created that gets, that generates taxes under referendum market value is not captured by TIF. So the, this, more importantly, the, the school district and the city also has referendum market value based taxes, those will still be generated and receive additional revenue based off of this project. That said, the tax capacity based levies will not generate additional revenue, because that portion will be captured as TIF.
A, a school referendum that after, if this passed, that the school referendum would tax on the total value, right?
If it's a referendum market value based tax, yes, it would.
Right. Counselor Lewis?
A referendum in place already also will have to pay, correct?
Yes, if there, if there are taxes that are collected based on the referendum market value, that they will generate additional revenue as a result of the project.
And that, yeah?
Just have one more.
Yeah, no.
The structural substandard, now, this city hall building, the old city hall building is probably the newest one in the area downtown. Is it safe to assume that the older buildings are probably, if we're using the same standards, structurally substandard?
Yeah, so the definition of structurally substandard is defined by statute, and it is based off the formula that the cost of bringing that building to current building standards exceeds 15% of the cost of constructing that building new. So if it were to cost a certain amount to build that building new, and the cost of bringing that existing building into compliance with that is 15% or more than that cost, then it does qualify as structurally substandard. That's the definition that's set by TIF, and it's, it could be applicable to other properties within the area, but it doesn't define them as blighted, there's no scarlet letter that's placed on any of those buildings that says that they have to be redeveloped. There's-
Does that apply to single-family residential homes that were built in the 1800s in Shakopee?
It, it could if, if the city were to choose to create a, a TIF district in that area, it could apply if the cost of bringing those buildings into compliance is greater than 15% of the cost of rebuilding that building, then yeah, or bringing in, bringing those buildings into compliance with current code requirements, I should say.
So that would immediately drop the value of them properties?
But, I don't know if it would necessarily impact the value of the properties, I think it's, those, those properties are, you know, they, they're, they're code compliant, or they're not code compliant, but they're, you know, they're grandfathered in within their current condition. There's no obligation that any of those buildings have to come into compliance with current code under current building law, or building code law, it's just that for purposes of qualifying a, qualifying a TIF district, that's the standard with which we qualify it as structurally substandard, but there's no obligation by anybody that owns a property that's been qualified as such to make any improvements outside of whatever the normal building code might require.
Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, basically, what you're saying is if we take a building that's 50 years old, was built to code at that point in time, and you're going to inspect it today, and it's not going to pass because today's codes are more stringent than 50 years ago. There's no grandfather clause, you know, pretty much a 10-year-old building could qualify for a TIF because codes change so often.
Well, it, a good question. It would depend on the cost difference necessary to bring an existing building up into compliance with the current code. Depending on the age of the building, that's, that's likely to be different. I think we would have to probably be reviewed on a case-by-case basis, but, but ultimately, it's the, the difference between older codes and current codes is a portion of the formula as it relates to the qualification, but again, there's no obligation by a building owner to have to do any improvements if they, you know, unless it was required otherwise by, by building code.
And then the, the, for the city hall site, though, we're going to get public infrastructure improvements, correct?
Yeah, I think we'll have to get into what the specific improvements that will be funded as part of the development agreement, but I believe the intent was to fund specifically certain public improvements related to the development of that project and certain costs related to that. I would defer to the community development director, Kersky, as to what those might be, and we can obviously get into those more specifically when it comes to the approval of the development agreement. One thing I would add as somewhat unique to the, to TIF 20 is that the property is currently tax exempt, it's owned by the city, so at the time it becomes taxable, the county will assign a market value to that site. Given the condition of the building and prior conversations with the county, it's assumed that that market value will be approximately $200,000. So there will be a small amount of new tax base that will actually be added to the city's tax base as a whole as a result of that property going from tax exempt to taxable.
Other questions on District 20? On District 20? Okay?
All right. So this is the proposed boundary for TIF number 21. You can see this is County Road 21 up here and County Road 16 down here, it's in the South Bridge area. So there's two parcels here, and those parcels are qualified for the creation of a soils-conditioned TIF district. This is something that's not commonly used within Minnesota TIF law, I've been doing this for almost 13 years now, and this would actually be the first soil-conditioned TIF district that I have done. It's not commonly used because there's a very specific criteria for the eligibility for creation of a district within this, under this portion of statute. So in order for a parcel to qualify for the creation of a soils-conditioned, conditioned TIF district, there has to be the presence of hazardous substance, pollution, or contaminants which require removal or remedial action for use, and such removal and remedial action is specific in the Development Action Response Plan that's done or prepared in partnership with the Minnesota PCA. So not only do they have to have, does there have to be a hazardous substance or pollution or contaminants located within the site, but the cost of removing or mediating those contaminants has to exceed one of the, one of the following two tests. Either the cost of removing or mitigating those conditions has to exceed, either has to exceed the fair market value of the land before completion of the preparation, or the estimated removal or remediation cost has to exceed $2 per square foot, and that's per square foot of land area. So a very preliminary cost estimate that was, that we had in hand for the remediation at the time that the TIF district plan was created identified a cost of approximately $2.14 per square foot, however, I think there's been additional determination or additional analysis performed on the site that has shown that the remediation cost might actually be significantly higher than that. So at a minimum, we're looking at a remediation cost of $2.14, and it potentially could be higher. The other thing that's specific to a soil-conditioned TIF district is what TIF can be used for. Another district we talked about, it could be streets, it could be public utilities, those types of improvements. With a soil correction district, there's only two eligible expenditures for the use of the TIF. It's, one is the remediation expenses as documented within the Development Action Response Plan, and the other is land acquisition costs. So what's being proposed within this TIF district, and you'll see this within the specific, within the development agreement when it's brought back before you, is again, that it's only being proposed that the, that the TIF will be used for the remedial cost and not for land acquisition. So again, this is a TIF district where we're bringing the TIF plan in front of you to seek authority to enter into future development agreements, those development agreements will be brought back to you at a later date. So when we put together the TIF plan for TIF District Number 21, we had 57,000 square feet of commercial buildings, was our assumption that those would be constructed within the area and that those would be valued at approximately $200 per square foot, plus the existing value of the land. So again, the TIF plan assumes no market value inflation, so again, we've put that hedge in there, hoping that there will be inflation, that it will occur, and that it will shorten the term of the TIF district, and again, we've assumed that the city will retain 10%. So one of the things that was a little unique about this district is that one of the parcels is located within one school district, and the other parcel, there's a very big parcel and a very small parcel, and the very small parcel is actually within a different, within a different school district. So there's two eligible tax rates, so the county is going to have some fun trying to figure that out in the future when they're calculating the future tax increment revenue and that, they're going to have to go through a bit of a, a bit of a chore to bifurcate the TIF revenue based on each of the school district applicable tax rates. Again, we've assumed that the first increment will be delayed until 2021 to assume, to include any, any construction that occurred in 2018 and 2019. So the final receipt of TIF would be 2041 based on 21 total receipts. There's a picture of the proposed development for TIF 20, that probably should have been earlier, and then we'll talk about the budget for tax increment revenue for TIF 21. So when we looked at the net present value of the future tax increment revenue, projected a net present value for future, or for the, for the reimbursement of current cost of approximately $2,028,000. So again, that would be the net present value of cost incurred today by the developer that will be eligible to be reimbursed under this version of the TIF plan. And again, I believe that was at an interest rate of 5%, which allowed for the reimbursement of eligible interest incurred on the borrowing of, for cost, for the funding of those costs upfront by the developer of 1.6 million, and the city would be retaining, could retain up to $400,000 worth of tax increment revenue for administrative purposes, bringing the total budget and the total revenue of the TIF district to $4,66,881. So again, if the city were to so choose, the approval of the TIF district plan would provide the city with the authority to enter into future development agreements. If you wish to do so, you would adopt the resolution approving the tax increment financing plan, as well as the redevelopment plan for the Minnesota River Valley Housing and Redevelopment Project Number One, and at a future date, review of the development agreement and specific terms of assistance will be brought back to you. So again, with that, I'll stand for any questions on TIF 21.
Questions on 21? I have, Tom, what is the public infrastructure improvement on 21?
There wouldn't be any public infrastructure improvement. The TIF would be limited to, by, by statute, TIF is limited to be able to be, to be used to reimburse either land acquisition or remedial, and/or remediation costs directly incurred on the site. So the, 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 right now, the development agreement is proposing to reimburse only the remedial, or remediation costs that would be incurred on the site and no land acquisition.
On this slide that you have up, is that the, it says expenses there, but this is the, the tax increment that's available, is that correct?
Yeah, it's both. The, the budget, the budget authority for incurring expenditures for a TIF district is derived from the total amount of revenue that would be generated by the district. So first, we start with the creation of what the tax increment revenue would be, and then we would work backwards into what a net present value and, would be for what costs we would incur in today's dollars.
So what if those expenses were less than the $2 million?
Again, that's, that would be a development agreement term, so at the time the development agreement is set, it will only be, the developer will only be able to be reimbursed for documented costs incurred by them. So anytime you enter in to a pay-go agreement for any project with the developer, it could have a specific budget amount, but they have to provide receipts for what they incurred that were eligible and defined within that pay-as-you-go agreement. And if they incur less than the amount of the pay-as-you-go agreement, they get reimbursed for that lesser amount. They can only get reimbursed for what they provide documentation for, and if that's a lesser amount, they get reimbursed a lesser amount, and the district gets decertified early.
Counselor Walco?
Now, you have this first line as land acquisition remediation, but you said that they were only going to use remediation, so that $2 million would all be remediation?
That would be the potential maximum budget authority for reimbursing the developer for remediation, the, the specific amount that they would be reimbursed would be determined or defined by the development agreement that would be coming back to you. This is just the amount that we included for budget authority as purposes of adopting a TIF plan and creating authority. So within, within, or following the adoption of a TIF plan, you could enter into a development agreement reimbursing them for up to $2 million in remediation costs.
Other questions on 21? Other questions on twenty-one? If this were to, in most of these, so far, those TIF projects, there's already a stake in the ground with a developer and, and things like that. In this one, this is just raw land with no project in front of us? Is that, so my question's going to be, if this were to pass tonight, and the project doesn't go forward and get built right away, how does that relate to the TIF district?
That would likely shrink the term of the TIF district. Obviously, some amount of future increment would likely be generated, some inflationary amount would likely be generated in 2021, which would start the clock for the duration of the TIF district. So that would start the clock of a TIF district. So if no, if no future development doesn't happen right away, and there's a longer period of time before it happens, it would shrink the terms of the district and would shrink the potential revenue capacity of the district. And at the time the city chose to enter into a redevelopment or a development agreement, the principal amount of that agreement would have to be defined at the time that a development was actually ready to occur.
So it's a pay-as-you-go, but let's say the developer remediates the soil, but then there isn't a project right away, so it just shrinks it up, right?
Yeah, and if they, if they were to remediate the soil and enter into a development agreement that identified an amount based on that remediation now, but future development didn't occur until a much later date, that would shrink the likelihood that they would get repaid the full amount, because it would be, you would be delaying the likelihood that they, or the amount of, you'd be losing years out of the TIF revenue.
Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I'm going to make a speculation here that the property owner wouldn't be coming forward with this TIF if he didn't have a potential buyer for that property, because as you say, he'd be on the hook for the difference.
Yeah, they would certainly, as with all pay-as-you-go districts, they're certainly taking on that risk of the future TIF revenue being present and being capable of reimbursing themselves. So they're going to want to time the incurring of any cost as close to that as possible because that is a risk that they're going to be bearing.
Other questions of our TIF council? If not, thank you, Tom.
Okay. Mayor and Council, the other thing we need to point out is on the TIF twenty-one, they will still have to pay the fiscal disparities in the state tax. That's why there's such a difference, even though it's a much larger piece of property with commercial development. In downtown, there is no fiscal disparities or state tax on residential, so that's why there's similar value.
The fiscal disparities on that commercial piece in South Bridge is exempt from any TIF. Is that correct?
Mayor, that's correct.
Yeah, so, and if I could clarify this a little bit, that is a good point, Michael. When the city creates a TIF district, they have the option to either capture more tax increment revenue by taking that fiscal disparities contribution from outside the TIF district, or they have the ability to remove it from the calculation. So in the case of this, the city's choosing to remove the fiscal disparities from the TIF calculation, which is shrinking the amount of TIF revenue available, but maintaining that portion of the tax base, so not, what that does is it prevents any further burden being put on the general tax base as a result of the TIF district. So there is an election that's available to be made by the city. This TIF plan is proposed to be the lesser of the two options that limits the tax increment revenue, but doesn't have any offsetting impact as it relates to fiscal disparities.
I have one last que, or Counselor Lewis?
Go ahead.
I have a question actually on the modified document that's in front of us. I don't think you have a slide on it, but page six, and it talks about the original tax capacity rate, where you do some calculations, and it's showing this because I believe this is in the Shakopee School District and the Burnsville School District, I believe. And the, I'm looking at the tax rates, and they're all the same, the city on both sides, the county. But the, the school districts have two drastically different tax rates. So Shakopee's at 52%, and 191 is at 25.7. Is that just the difference in school districts, or?
Yeah, the tax rates that are present for each of the taxing entities are specific to the amount that they have levied each year, and they get calculated per, per the formula as, you know, as tax rates are calculated. So, so yeah, there is a disparity between the two tax rates for each of the districts and specific to each district's funding choices.
Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the public understands this. So the fiscal disparities, the way we're going to do this TIF or the way it's planned, that's a whole separate ballgame that's not included in the TIF twenty-one. It could be, but then that portion of, of expense would be borne by the rest of the city.
Exactly. So, so yeah, so the fiscal disparities election that's being made for this district is to make the contribution to the pool from the tax capacity that's created within the project, which shrinks the amount of available tax increment revenue, but it does not create any offsetting burden. So it is, it is the method that allows for the smaller amount of tax increment revenue, but it doesn't create any impact as a result of that.
Follow-up?
No, just a follow-up. That, that just puts a bigger onus on the property owner at that point.
It does limit the amount of, the TIF revenue capacity that there would be available to them, yes.
Other questions of our consultant? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
We do have two different public hearings open, so we can probably try to take these and try to be in order here. For the District Twenty-one, would the applicant like to come forward and make any comment? Please state your name and address for the record. I think you better tell them who twenty-one is. Oh, the South Bridge one, I apologize. Trying to keep them straight here, I.
Steve Soltel, Shakopee Crossings.
I said twenty-one.
Obviously, a situation we didn't anticipate a year ago. We had a previously approved project that we were getting underway when we found this soil condition. Proceeded to get involvement with appropriate consultants and the appropriate response action plan with the MPCA to even get to this process. So it's been a long process, and I assure you, we do have things that we want to bring forward and continue with, with this development. We are at risk on it. So this district essentially just covers a condition that we didn't anticipate and didn't cause. We have our non-responsibility and non-association letters from the MPCA that have been submitted for part of the application itself. So beyond that, I'm here if you have any questions.
Questions, applicant? I guess I asked you this before, Mr. Soltel, that when we were talking a year ago when this came up, we were talking about the cost of the remediation. You said several hundred thousand dollars. Now we're at $2 million.
Yeah, it grows and grows. The situation was much worse and more widespread throughout the parcel than we anticipated, and we are also still making every effort to minimize that cost because it's our money that's being spent. We have to go finance the work to be done, and it stopped the prior projects because of the escalating costs. And the way to bring this project back is by being able to address this soil condition through the TIF district. We have every intention of controlling costs. If we went in there and removed every square inch of garbage, we'd be probably beyond the limits of the intended authority. We have an approved plan that leaves much of it in place. It removes the garbage in the building pad areas. It creates a new base, if you will, for the parking lot and the other areas, and has a stable condition that the MPCA is comfortable with, we're comfortable with, the financing world's comfortable with, we're able to move forward and have marketability of the property again.
We can pave over the, we can make a parking lot on top of it, though, can we not?
We can, but we need a stable voice, base on top of it. So we have to remove a certain amount in the entire area, but not the entire amount of garbage in the entire area. So that's where we're trying to control costs.
And when we discuss TIF district, typically we discuss public infrastructure improvements, and really, there doesn't seem to be one here.
This, yeah, this is.
Directly to the developer and the land.
This is per statute specifically for the soil condition itself. So it doesn't create a public street, it doesn't create a public water main, it doesn't create a public anything other than address the soil condition.
Counselor Lewis?
But it does affect our taxing because that property is worthless as it is. If we, if we don't do this TIF.
Went down and would be going down further if we're unable to do anything.
So in that way, it is a public good, because without it, we aren't going to gain any taxes.
Absolutely.
Other questions with the applicant? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. I'm just going to stick with, with TIF District twenty-one, the soil at South Bridge. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record if you want to make comment on this. On District twenty-one, the soil remediation in South Bridge, please come forward. This is a public hearing. Counselor Lewis?
Seeing no people coming forward, I'd like to close the public hearing.
We opened both these simultaneously. Do you want to close them individually, or, Ms. Thompson?
Either, either way.
That's fine.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion in a second, then, to close the public hearing. Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, TIF District is, or the public hearing is closed?
On twenty-one.
On twenty-one. Counselor McCall?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number R2018-101, approving a tax increment financing plan for tax increment soil condition District Number twenty-one, and a modified redevelopment plan for the Minnesota River Valley Housing and Redevelopment Project Number One.
Second. I have a motion and a second, further discussion. I have a question for Counselor Lehman. We just had a TIF district on a apartment building downtown on a riverfront that created, that had a dump on it, but the city owned the land, and it's got zero value really right now, and the proposed development is $24 million, and we have to do the remediation I don't know how you're going to vote on this, but I, I look at this developer and then the soil remediation, and I agree with Counselor Lewis that something has to be done, but it almost seems like the same to get ready for the development. Is this the same or different?
What's the question?
This remediation of this site compared to the riverfront apartment.
Well, I don't know what's at the riverfront apartments. I haven't seen a report on it exclusively. I don't know what the costs are going to be. I don't know how widespread it is.
Can you please talk into your mic, Counselor Lehman? I'm sorry.
Sure. I, I don't, I don't know all the details about the riverfront project in detail, like what was presented here, size-wise, and, and, you know, I, I just don't.
Okay.
I don't have all the bits and pieces. I guess the main difference is one is owned by the city of Shakopee, and one is owned by a private individual or a company or whatever it is. So that would be one difference if you're asking me for differences.
Other discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Do we have more resolutions on this one?
We're back to twenty. District twenty now.
Now we're moving on to twenty. So the, we've heard from staff, we've heard from TIF, would the developer like to come forward and discuss their presentation on the City Hall site? Welcome, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, thank you. Austin Morris, Enclave Development, 3717 Grandwood Drive, North Fargo, North Dakota, Would it be okay if I gave a brief background on us?
Sure.
Okay. Enclave Development began seven years ago. We actively pursue enclaves or creating enclaves. We want to create distinct, unique communities within distinct communities like this one. We've completed three adaptive reuse Renaissance Zone and other downtown projects in Fargo, Grand Forks, North Dakota, and we're passionate about downtowns. I'm a member of the Downtown Community Partnership on the board for Fargo, and one thing that struck me when I visited Shakopee after visiting with Michael Kurski about this site, that was incredibly impressive, was driving through your city and seeing all the industry. It was really fun to see a city that has grown this fast and that has all the job growth that a city of this size could ever want. I mean, I drove through by Shutterfly, Bayer, InTrust, and many more major employers, Amazon, and it was, it was frankly startling for a city of this size. So it, it, that was really exciting and made me like the site even more. And then I got to drive through the downtown community, and it reminds me a lot of Fargo's downtown. And we've done three projects there, as I said. One project, as an example, was an adaptive reuse of office space that was vacant for 10 years. That space was adapted into multifamily or rental housing. That's right on Broadway. We also converted a school that was vacant for 15 years and not providing any tax revenue. It was owned by this Fargo Public School District, and we converted that to housing and mixed-use retail. We also did a project east of downtown, kind of on the edge, again, mixed-use, provided 94 units of housing. One thing that's common with these projects is the impossibility of them without some sort of method to abate real estate taxes or create a TIF district or create a pilot, which we use to abate real estate taxes, and the city identifies, like you guys are, the future value of real estate taxes on a present value basis exceeds what would occur without providing this necessary assistance. I was surprised that many of your citizens don't live in Shakopee but work in Shakopee. That's striking. When you have 1.6% vacancy rate and the REES report outlook goes 1.6, 1.5, 1.5, 1.4, that's surprising. And I want to frankly add more housing in the core, which will create more opportunities for retailers, artists, and the community. As you've seen in many national reports, the core of the city activates something truly special to attract talent and to retain talent and to make a city really special. You guys are extremely fortunate to have a downtown, a naturally occurring downtown. Many places now are trying to build them.
Yes.
And those never look the same. So I appreciate your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I'm looking forward to working on this project with you.
Questions about, to the applicant or the developer, Counselor McCall?
I think it's very interesting that you compared Fargo and Shakopee a little bit, not only with the railroad, but I know with Fargo, as much as they've developed their downtown, they are having, or supposedly having, parking issues, and how did you address that, especially taking on this parcel when they're already talking about parking?
So we have kind of a unique perspective on that because we believe we need parking. We have other developers or other folks in our city that see driverless cars as maybe a future way of avoiding parking. We would rather include the parking with a flat plate structure where it could be convertible to some other use, whether it be office or retail, long-term, but have the parking we need so we don't inundate downtowns with excessive parking along major retail storefronts that are supposed to be activated by pedestrian activity, and then also be able to be accessible for patrons of those businesses. So in this plan, we did two levels of parking, which is one of the challenges with this site. We did two levels of parking to achieve 113 spaces, and then we have an additional, additional spaces surrounding the building, which make our parking count exceed one per bedroom. In our project in Fargo, we had 94 units and 113 spaces, but we had off-street parking, and there was no retail nearby, so we weren't impacting that area. And then there, from a parking standpoint, I would say we're adequate. We probably don't have 10 parking spaces vacant at the busy times, but it's more than adequate. And that's why on this site, I want to make sure, especially in a downtown that's growing and going to continue to be in growth mode for a while, you will have an opportunity in the future to look at parking-wrapped structures, to look at more complex projects to deal with parking impact. Currently, this project takes care of our parking and leaves the parking on homes.
Other questions, Counselor Lehman?
So the picture we're looking at is the project that's requesting the TIF that's in front of us?
Yes.
At what point do we see more of the project? Now?
What, what I told Michael is. Um, what, what I told Michael is, um, from our standpoint on the rendering side, every time we draw a rendering, it costs significant dollars, and we have three more coming within the next few days. I can share more about the project. The exterior facade is similar to how it will look. If you have questions related to the rooftop amenity or clubhouse or where the lobby is, I can share details about that, where the retail is, because I know where it is. We also have a conceptual plan that shows a overview from a bird's-eye view standpoint, as well as unit mix, size, and spatial quality.
Mayor and Counsel tonight, you're only setting the maximum value of the TIF.
Right.
For this particular site, you'll see a private development agreement that will follow with specific plans and development costs.
It's much like twenty-one with, we're talking about the district and without a project, right? I asked that question, and then this one has some concept stuff and it's about the district.
Mayor and Counsel, we were down this road before with the previous developer and didn't get to this level. I think the, we feel pretty confident that within the next thirty days, you'll see a private development agreement along with what the exact costs will be.
I understand that. Counselor Luce?
Well, I was just going to comment that the rooftop, uh, area is really not what most people think is a rooftop. It's in the cutout here, which would be at what, above the first floor instead of above the fifth floor?
Yes, yep.
I'm sorry, Counselor Lehman, did you have another question?
So, we're, the density of this is roughly a hundred and sixty per acre?
I believe so, yes. I think it was twenty-six thousand square feet and eighty-two units.
How do we get to this density?
Um, I reviewed what density I needed to achieve in order to make it financially feasible while also looking at how many spaces I could fit in the underground parking to determine how many units I could fit above.
Do you have any slides of the parking with you today?
Uh, I actually have, I think we have, um...
Can put it on the overhead? Michael will help you. Level one, level two?
Uh, so, level one, um, is all parking. Level two, um, we always try and wrap the entire parameter with something of visual interest so that from a pedestrian standpoint, walkability improves and safety improves. We have open window areas and something of interest. Bike storage is indoor, locked, secure. The lobby, amenity area usually has a coffee bar lounge. And then the retail activates home street, so there won't be any hard space along home street.
Counselor Whiting?
Oh, I, I thank you for taking a good look at the parking in this area. That is a concern downtown. I think it's, we're kind of getting ahead of ourselves. This is the development agreement, but I appreciate your look at that. The only thing different between here and Fargo is we don't have the bison, so, uh...
Well, but the nice thing is that it reminds me a lot of Fargo, so I enjoy working in communities like ours, and that's why we stay out in this arena, so.
I appreciate that.
What is the total value of your project?
Uh, eighty-two units. I'd have to check. It was... Construction cost was around a hundred and... Forty-five thousand hard cost plus interest plus land, um, somewhere around a hundred and sixty thousand per unit.
Total, I was trying to get a total cost for the entire building.
What is that, thirteen million? Around thirteen million.
Questions of, uh, the developer? Questions of the developer? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody would like to make, come forward and make comment on the TIF district? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Counselor Lehman?
Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on the TIF district for number twenty. Uh, further discussion, 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 all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Public hearing is closed. Counselor Whiting?
Make a motion to approve resolution number R two zero one eight dash one zero zero approving a tax increment financing plan for tax increment financing redevelopment district number twenty and a modified redevelopment plan for the Minnesota River Valley Housing and Redevelopment Project Number One for the site of the former City Hall.
I have a second. Further discussions? Discussion, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two. Thank you very much. Let's move ahead then to item seven B, a public hearing for vacation of an easement at thirteen twenty-five Meadow Court. Counselor Lehman?
Motion to open a public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Uh, further discussion, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Public hearing is open. Uh, Michael?
You're with me two seconds here.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. This is vacation of public drainage and utility easement for thirteen twenty-five Meadow Court. This is the site. This was the original plat. The parcel we're speaking about is parcel number, number ten over here in the corner. It's lot ten, block one, the northwest corner Jennifer Lane and Meadow Court. So, right now, they're currently, this, if you remember, the county set up this area originally when they did some of the roads, they had a twenty-five-foot easement. Um, that is what we'll be vacating tonight. We will maintain the city's drainage and utility easement around the property. So, this is a little unusual on this particular corner. We would typically not require twenty-five-foot easement. We only require a foot, ten-foot drainage and utility easement. So, we're vacating basically the county's twenty-five feet and keeping the ten.
Counselor Lehman?
Ms. Kurski, that's a side yard, correct?
Mayor and Counsel, that's correct.
Counselor Whiting?
Do we know if there are going to be any other of these twenty-five-foot easement issues on other parcels in the future?
Uh, I can't promise you. Um, this is the only one that's come forward. As you know, there's a developer working in this area and they brought forward that this lot was basically not very buildable because of that twenty-five-foot setback. And again, it's not something the city created. It was, came out of when the county did the work in the area.
We may run into this again. We may run into this again.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Luce?
Can you back up and put the slide with all of them on there? There you go.
So, this is the lot that we're discussing tonight.
Right. To the backside of that lot, is that another lot or is that going to be a street?
Um, I believe this is the rest of that subdivision. This is the road that runs through it.
Yeah, right to the left of your arrow, yeah.
Mayor and Counsel, if you remember, this is an area where the county put this road through. I believe there's a large lot subdivision here that you approved, changing the setback, and this is another lot where I believe there's a vacant house on it.
Okay. I just wanted to get a bearing.
So, uh, well, this might come into play down just to the, uh, right. Right. That'll come into play there in the future. Other questions of staff? Other questions of staff? If not, thank you. Um, this is a public hearing?
You know, I do have one more question of staff. I'm sorry.
Counselor Lehman, that's fine.
It's done. Michael, if we go right across the street to the west, it looks like that's a ten-foot easement over there on lot six?
Um, lot, sorry, my eyes are not...
This one right here?
Lot number one?
And six.
Diagonally.
Yeah, I'm looking at six too. It looks like the dotted line is pretty close to the road. That must be like a ten-foot there.
I believe lot six, it's ten feet currently.
Right.
When this was plotted. So, if you remember, this road was built before it came into the city, um, by the county, and that, you can see that line follows the road alignment.
And lot number one, right across, right across Jennifer. Is that a twenty?
Uh, Mayor and Counsel, I'm not sure if this has been built yet, um...
So, that one might be coming in for a ten also.
Again, we don't require twenty-five feet.
Thank you. This is a public hearing? Anybody like to come forward and make comment in regard to this vacation? Please state your name and address for the record and welcome.
Good evening. My name is John Anderson. I'm representing Eternity Homes. My address is one four eight three two Estate Avenue Southeast Pryor Lake, Minnesota. Yeah, Eternity Homes bought lot ten, block one of Prairie Meadows subdivision, and we realized after the fact that the easement that was dedicated when Jennifer Lane, which was the north-south road, was the frontage road for the County Road Seventeen construction, was built, they had a twenty-five-foot drainage utility easement for a ditch section. After that road was constructed, the developer came in and developed Prairie Meadows subdivision to city standards, and a city standard is curb and gutter, no longer needed the additional drainage on that western side, and dedicated a ten-foot drainage utility easement, which is your typical standard with the plat. The setback for this district is twenty feet on a side yard. The easement's twenty-five, so it encroaches five feet into the building pad of that lot, and we're requesting that easement's vacated so we can go ahead and build a house, and we, I think they showed the survey of what we're proposing on that lot, so. So, if you have any other questions, I guess I'm here to answer that.
Questions of the applicant? Questions of the applicant? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to come forward and make comment in regard to this vacation, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Mokel? Further discussion, 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 all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Public hearing is closed. Counselor Lehman?
Motion for resolution R twenty eighteen dash zero nine five approving the vacation of twenty-five-foot public drainage and utility easement for property located at thirteen twenty-five Meadow Court, lot ten, block one, Prairie Meadows.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Luce? Further discussion, 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 all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Counselor Lehman?
Short recess, Mayor?
Second.
That didn't take long. I have a motion for a recess, short recess and a second. There's no further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Will stand in recess. Let's reconvene the City Council, Shakopee City Council meeting for August 21st back to order. Uh, we are actually coming back from recess. And, uh, we are on item number eight, recess for economic, uh, development authority. Counselor Whiting?
Make a motion to recess to the Economic Development Authority meeting?
Second.
I have a motion of second for their discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. President?
Cool. We'll call a Shakopee Economic Development Authority meeting for August 21st, 2018 to order. Secretary, please note the role. All of you should have an agenda with the information attached. Motion to approve the agenda would be in order. Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Seconded by Mr. Luce. Any questions on the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Set business.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to offer the EDA minutes, uh, for August 8th, 2018.
Any seconds to the motion?
Second.
Ms. Mokel? Have all read the minutes? All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 4A. Soil condition TIF plant for Shakopee Crossing. We've all just reviewed this, unless something has changed. Mr. Kerski?
Mr. President, board members know this is, uh, the next two items are the soils TIF and the downtown TIF. One of the comments they will make is we did receive a letter from the county today. And their only concerns with this is that there hadn't been a tax appeal as, um, Mr. Dunaway mentioned on the soils TIFs, so that will be adjusted. And on the downtown TIF, they had no objections and no questions.
Okay. Mr. Whiting?
Make a motion to approve Resolution E. 2018-017. Approving a tax increment financing plan for tax increment soils conditions. District number 21 and modified redevelopment plan for Minnesota River Valley Housing Redevelopment Project Number 1.
Any seconds to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Myself. Item 4B. Mr. Mars?
Mr. Uh, President, I just want to make sure when I read these documents, are actually matching documents? And no, no difference in the documents?
Um, so, the motion by Mr. Whiting was actually an R, and it should have been an E.
Oh, I thought I said E.
I think he said E.
He did, okay. So we were good there.
So the plans you'd be approving were the ones on the desk tonight?
Yep. Item 4B. TIF plant for former City Hall site. Mr. Mars?
Yep, this, uh, that was my only question. I mean, we, these packet items are in duplicate because of different boards, so I just want to make sure they're the same.
Okay.
But I'll offer Resolution Number E. 2018-016, approving a tax increment financing plan for tax increment financing redevelopment, District Number 20. And a modified redevelopment plan for the Minnesota River Valley Housing Development Number 1 for the former site of City Hall.
Second. Ms. Mokel?
I'll second that, and I'll also add, you know, if we don't vote on this, we are asking the current property owners to be assessed for the alleyway improvements.
That was a second, correct?
Yep, it was a second.
Discussion on the motion?
Does the first take the condition? She added to it.
Why didn't?
No, she was stating that by voting for this, the alley could be improved without assessments on that block. Is that correct?
No.
No, that's not what I said. I said the current property, without voting yes for this, are, the current property owners will be assessed for the alleyway improvements. And this is a supermajority.
Correct. And the... Two alleys to the east were assessed.
Oh, okay.
Any questions on the motion? I have a question of Mr. Thompson. Mr. Thompson, the TIF plan for the former City Hall site, item 4B in the economic development. That's not a supermajority vote, no.
No.
The TIF is a...
The comprehensive plan.
Right.
I'm ahead of myself. It's okay.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two. Item number five, Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, September 4th, 2018 at 7:00 PM.
Second, Mr. Luce? September 4th? Did you say?
That's what I said.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We adjourn. Another record.
Very efficient. Thank you, Mr. President. Well, uh, reconvene the City of Council, City of Shakopee City Council meeting for August 21st. Uh, we are on, uh, 10A1 was added to consent. We are on 10B1, comprehensive plan amendment, high-density residential guiding for Sars and flats. Michael, welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mayor and Council, this is a comprehensive plan amendment for Sars and flats. This is the site, um... And this gets a little complicated, but this has already been approved and actually is a building permit. The issue came up at the Met Council that there were one dwelling unit and acre, um, too high based on the guiding, which is currently medium density, which is the same as the existing neighborhood. The existing neighborhood will get fixed in the 2040 comp plan, but they would not allow a sewer permit to be issued unless this was re-guided to higher density. That's why we're here. This was approved 4-0 at the planning commission.
Counselor Whiting?
We, this is the project we had discussed as a higher-density, uh, project. I, I think you said it just came in at one dwelling unit above?
So, Mayor and Council, this is a two-phase development, fifty-seven units in the first phase, forty-eight units in Phase 2, so it's 10.51, uh, dwelling units per acre, and two, ten units, uh, density, um, is what's allowed in the current comp plan, even though the zoning allows eight to fourteen units an acre. So we need to adjust the comp plan for this specific parcel for them to issue the sewer permit.
So, we talked about zoning and, actually, I believe this site got a credit because it was considered a close to transit.
Close to transit? Yes, Mayor, you're correct.
And now the, and it's zone R3? Yet the Met Council comes back and say, "We didn't do that right," or we, I mean, I thought this really fit into R3.
Mayor and Council, it fits the zoning without an issue, but the 2030 comp plan, which was done in 2008, um, you'll see it's that kind of orange color, which based on the comp plan, it's supposed to be ten dwelling units an acre, so even the existing townhomes really don't meet that. And...
We have to adjust them to...
This is before my time, but no one mentioned this until they went to get their building permit. So when we met with the Met Council, the only solution was to change the land use.
Counselor Lehman?
I did find my notes. Thought I left them in my truck. So, if you'd like to pull up the 2030 comp plan off the city website, it shows that R3 zoning allows eight to twelve units per acre, fourteen with a PUD. And it's also guided high-density residential as R3 in our 2030 comp plan.
Mayor and Council, this is the, the color that you see, so this is an issue with the 2030 comp plan. Zoning and density have nothing to do with the colors on the comp plan. And we're fixing that in the 2040 comp plan, but they have...
This is what it says.
...refused to issue the permit for this unless it's re-guided. That's all I can tell you, and we've lost the battle, and the developers not happy.
I'm gonna give Mr. Lehman's argument here. For him, but I, if we do this tonight, if we make this adjustment, there's no chance that this is gonna come back with a new plan to upgrade to our four highest level, our more higher level than what you're proposing tonight.
That would require rezoning, and they only have tax credit approval for this specific project. So that would be basically, I would say, an impossibility, and they have full building permits that have been submitted and approved and paid for.
Okay.
All right. Further questions of staff? Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I got Hy-Vee apartments, deja vu happening.
Right, that's why I had your argument for you.
I mean, this is what our current comprehensive plan says. I'd be more than willing to sit down with the Met Council and teach them how to read. It's what it says. I mean, you want to put it on a podium for everybody to read? I mean, we probably should.
I think we sit at this board in all in agreement that the, this development matched the R3.
It matched, Mayor and Council, it matches the zoning perfectly. It does not match, in their opinion, the comprehensive plan. This is an ongoing issue. I will remind you that they objected to the house that you all approved in downtown that gets sewer because it did not match the comp plan. They waived their objection so that we could get sewer to that house, but...
But then, uh, just to back up on Counselor Whiting's comment. We've already approved their plan. Uh, they can't expand. They're dialed into that regardless of what we do tonight. Is that correct?
Mayor, Mayor and Council, they are anxiously waiting to start construction and have been fully mobilized and ready to go and are waiting for this action.
Counselor, uh, Mokel?
I think with that, then, I'm gonna make a motion to approve Resolution Number R. 2018-096, a resolution approving an amendment to the 2030 comprehensive plan to re-guide property at Sars and Flats First Edition from medium-density residential to high-density residential land and move its adoption.
I have a motion of second by Counselor Whiting. I have a question here. This seems like a game of semantics here with these words. We use the word medium. The Met Council has wording that says high density, is it?
Mayor and Council, I, Eric Weiss, who works with them every day, I will not say that he is somewhat frustrated, but where, you'll see later on the agenda, two more items that basically we have had to either do or have to do in order to get sewer permits. So, when some members of council have asked, "What can the Met Council do if things are not approved?", I think the answer is they can hold up sewer permits.
Uh, motion of second on the table. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two.
I'll fax this to...
Does the comp plan amendment take a supermajority? I think with, uh, uh, Mr. Thompson?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, yes, it takes a supermajority except for affordable housing, and this project qualifies, so it's just a majority vote.
I'm still gonna fax this to the Met Council.
Mayor and Council, we are hoping that this does not require adjacent jurisdiction, um, approval. Since this is, uh, considered a minor amendment, so this will just go for an administrative approval.
Thank you. Moving ahead, 10B2, PUD, preliminary and final plat for Windermere Way, Second Edition. And, Michael, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the Benedictine Health Living Community of Shakopee. This is a PUD, uh, zoning, preliminary, and final plat for Windermere Way, Second Edition. This is the site. So this is right, um, off of Windermere Way, which you approved, uh, last council meeting. And this is the new county road that's been constructed, uh, by D.R. Horton. Here is the overall site plan, so the main building sits, um, up, up off of Windermere Way. There's a future building that will be, uh, a brownstone complex, and then down in this corner is the new, um, Spuck pumping station. So, it says nine-point-one acre site, one-hundred-and-eighty-three units in Phase 1 for a total of two-hundred-and-fifty-one units. One-hundred-and-forty-four independent living units, forty brownstones, those would also be independent living, forty-three assisted living, twenty-four memory care for a density of twenty-seven-point-three-four units, which is consistent with the underlying R4 zoning, which is required for a PUD. They get density bonuses for two units an acre for providing community and outdoor recreation facilities, and two units an acre for being located within a quarter-mile walking distance to a public park, um, that they are providing. There's a hundred-and-ninety-two parking spaces in Phase 1, a total of two-hundred-and-seventy-two overall, which complies with the city code regulations for parking. They, uh, as part of their PUD, would have an overheight structure approximately fifty-five feet tall. Um, the overall height is sixty-four-point-eight feet. As you remember, we measure to the midpoint of the roof. May be departed from to accomplish the purpose and intent of the PUD regulations. So they have done a shadow study, which the planning commission looked at, and it does not impact any of the surrounding homes or townhomes. Setbacks, block coverage, and landscaping requirements meet all the current R4 standards. Design standards and project amenities are generally consistent with the PUD purpose and intent. Planning staff is requesting either hardy plank siding or LP smart siding to be utilized as a substitute for the proposed vinyl siding. You have a material board in front of you here, which is a requirement now of the PUD, and they have changed the siding to LP siding. Uh, criteria, criteria for granting a plan unit development have been met as identified in the ordinance and resolution before you. So preliminary plat, uh, Windermere Way, First Edition created Windermere Way's public right-of-way and an outlot. This preliminary plat is part, uh, plat of the First Edition of the outlot. This plat creates a lot between, uh, for the BHS complex and an outlot for Phase 2, which is the future brownstones, which would be independent living. Conditions applied approved are noted in the city engineering and Spuck memos. Principally, the conditions pertain to receiving fees related to the engineering infrastructure. Park dedication fees are estimated approximately four-hundred-and-nine-thousand dollars and will be used to develop a new park near and adjacent to this proposed project. Um, if you remember from the last Windermere, um, plat, right across the street from this is a large wooded area where there was formerly a house that is going to be a new city park. So these funds will be used to improve that as a new city park. So here's the plat. They meet all of our landscaping requirements. This is gonna be a fairly densely landscaped site. This is a requirement of the PUD. This is a requirement of the P U D, but basically they're gonna be providing senior living options of independent living, assisted living, and assisted living memory care. There will be kind of a grand court when you come into the building, kind of a restaurant area, they call it a bistro for residents, and also you can place grab a cup of coffee with visitors. Additional menus would include a chapel and assembly space, wellness and fitness rooms, dining, a club room, activity room. I do believe they're considering changing the theater. It would have a salon and library. There is continuous trails and sidewalks to promote a walkable site within the project. Interesting, they are trying to recall some of the historic nature of Shakopee and some of the agrarian buildings in this. And the independent living wing consists of four levels of housing over one level of structured parking. The assisted living wing will consist of two levels of housing above one level of memory care. The town center amenity will be two levels above one level of structured parking. So from a grade of ninety, nine oh eight, the independent living height is what requires an extra height in this district. So here are some renderings. Again, this siding would all be now L P. But here's some of their inspirations of other buildings that they looked at. They're also proposing, and shown on the board, sort of a metal panel that looks like wood to really relate to some of that more agrarian architecture. I will say that Spuck has redesigned their pump house to almost look like an outbuilding to this project, so it has kind of a barn-like appearance with the cupola, so it really will fit. Since it's a very prominent building in the front of this, it will fit with the overall architectural character. This, in the lower corner, is kind of that grand entry into their kind of town square where people can meet and also get coffee and food. Again, this is an unusual project, a lot of extra amenities for the residents with walking trails, so visitors can walk around the property along with the residents. And again, some ideas of where the landscaping ideas came from, some of the outbuilding kind of concepts. They have made one change. It's discussed at the planning commission. Originally had basically that stone that's on the material boards around the base. They're now gonna put that in some base areas, but also bring it up in multi-floor areas because they thought with the landscaping, you'll never see the stone. So they're gonna repurpose that stone into some more larger architectural elements, which I think will fit even better into this area.
More stone, you said?
They're gonna take the stone they were using on the base and actually put it into vertical elements. So this is a rendered site plan. You can see the independent living wing. Here's that town center where kind of the gathering spaces for the community with views out into the gardens. This is the assisted living and memory care wing, has its own underground parking over here. Lots of trails and walkways connecting down along Seventeenth. And then this is a large detention basin. There's gonna be a lot of landscaping on this site, so...
Can you point the area where the park will be?
The park is right here.
The, the higher elevation?
Yep. Yeah, we have discussed it. Unlikely, most of the residents will be using this because it's kind of uphill. And that's why they've spent a lot of energy kind of to keep their residents at grade and ADA accessible on this site. Here's kind of the overall, excuse me, floor plan. You can see it's all pretty connected. And this is the future brownstone buildings in the back. And here's their underground parking layout, so again, there's a significant amount of spaces protected from the weather for the residents. Here are some elevations to give you some kind of scale, so it does step down where the town center is. This is the main independent living wing. And then over here, this is the assisted living and memory care. So we've worked with them a lot to try and break up these larger facades, and that's why we thought it was important to switch to the L P material, because it's much more in character to the kind of outbuilding feel, because it has a much better reveal than the vinyl siding did. Here is the shadow study that was done. Again, it doesn't impact any of the surrounding residential. The only thing it really hits is Spuck's pump station. And then it's been very important for them to create kind of, so this has taken a view from the future park. So it really kind of sets in a pretty heavily landscaped area with a pretty large courtyard. Again, a lot of native landscaping. They really want the residents to go out and actually kind of work on some of the landscaping field that's kind of their backyard and front yard. And again, a lot of heavy landscaping and native species. This will become a major focal point for the community. There's kind of a covered area where they can hold events and meetings outside. In a little bit more detail, the memory garden, which will be more of a secure area for those residents, but again, still pretty lush with landscaping so that people can go outside and enjoy the area. And then this again is the backyard, so outdoor seating. It's interesting, they actually drew this rendering as the trees would be planted, probably a year or two, so they're not ginormous to kind of hide the building. But this gives you the kind of scale that this will be in a couple of years. So tonight, you are asked to approve resolution number R twenty eighteen oh ninety-four, resolution approving a preliminary plat and final plat on Windermere Way Second Edition, and approve ordinance number O twenty eighteen fourteen, and ordinance approving the planned unit development for the Benedictine Health Living Community of Shakopee and move for their adoption.
Questions of staff? Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I got a couple of questions. Can you put the overall site plan back up? There you go. The, on the plan page three of fifteen in the packet, it shows future twenty-six proof of parking spaces just to the east of this fire access, where it says fire access. So move your mouse straight up that trail, that driveway, to where it says fire access, just to the right to the future garden.
In the right spot for you?
Future garden.
Up further.
Up further, if I can get this to work. Here we go.
Right there. Just to the, just to the right of that is future parking, okay? It's a row of it, twenty-six, says.
So, so Mayor and Council, this is where the brownstones would go?
Let me finish my question, okay?
Okay.
If I'm looking at the driveway coming in, and you see where it steps down in size substantially?
Yep.
Right there. We're gonna have to make sure that that's gonna be large enough to actually access that future parking.
So Mayor and Council, this is a future phase, and so the design was just to provide this now for fire access to the building. They have to meet the hundred and fifty-foot hose requirement, so this road will serve as a service road for that. They can meet it on the rest of the building, either from their parking area or from Seventeenth. The fire departments agreed that they would basically park down here and hose. This building is fully sprinkled. This is just to get access and utilities down to this area for the future development.
So in a future phase, will that road continue on to the parking for the future phase?
There's parking under this building in the future phase.
Okay, how do you get to that?
So you're not looking at that tonight, but eventually this road will be widened and there will be underground parking in this building.
That's what I was asking. That's what I was asking, okay?
So that will be a P U D amendment that you'll see. Their thought is to build this, it takes several years for these to fill up, and that will generate demand. And in two or three years, you might see that P U D amendment for those brownstones.
Yeah, I get it, and they'll just extend that road, okay?
Yes, sir.
Second question?
Yep, go ahead.
What's the width of Windermere Way, right there, and what's the other road? Amber, Amber Glen Circle?
Um, Mayor and Council members, the, the width of the north-south road, I think, is thirty-seven feet, and the lesser road there, the east-west road, would be thirty-four feet, but I would have to confirm that. That's off the top of my head.
And, and I will say, the applicant's also been working with Spuck. One of the issues on the curves, Spuck had a separate access point to their future pump house. And so they've been working with the applicant, so they will share this road. And that's why this is a pretty big area, because in the event that one of those pumps fails, they need to be able to have a large well truck come in here to pull the wellhead out. And so instead of having two driveways, they're, are working on an agreement with Spuck that they'll be able to use their driveway.
Other questions of staff? Other questions of staff? If not, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and make a comment? Please state your name and address for the record, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Steve Coons from Essential Decisions, Inc., twenty-three forty-five Rice Street, Roseville. We're the development consultants representing B H S. I have with me Andy Opsol, the V P of Business Development with B H S. And we're excited to work on the project. Been fun working with the city staff. They've been great, and we're just here to answer any questions you might have. We also have a representative from our architect here as well.
Questions of applicant? You must have done some demographic studies out here, at least, for the, the marketplace is pretty, pretty active for this development?
Yes, we've done, throughout the process, market studies, and currently also with our financing, there'll be a financial feasibility study that will include a full market study, and the demographics are strong for this project.
Counselor Lehman?
There's parking only on the northernmost independent living part of the building, or both of them?
So the independent living, there's underground parking, and there's a little bit greater than a one-to-one ratio in the underground parking. So there's a hundred and sixteen independent living units, one thirty, one hundred and twenty-four underground parking stalls.
And it's only the northernmost building?
That's the northernmost building with the underground parking.
None under the southern building?
Correct.
Okay. I didn't see a garage door, so I was assuming that, unless it was gonna go under.
We do have a service delivery through there that, the underground is just into that town center area.
Other questions? If not, thank you. Oh, Counselor Luce?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. If this looks anything like the buildings I visited, more in for a very nice place for our seniors to live.
All right. No, no questions for the developer staff? Counselor Mokel?
May, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R two zero one eight dash zero nine four, resolution approving a preliminary and final plat of Windermere Way Second Edition, and approve ordinance number O two zero one eight dash zero one four, and ordinance approving the planned unit development of Benedictine Health Living Community of Shakopee and move their adoption.
I have a motion and a second by Counsel Whiting. Discussion, Counselor Lehman?
Nope, no, no questions. I was gonna second it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can have it.
No, go ahead, that's fine. I'm actually for it.
All right. Discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all very much. Moving ahead to ten B three, Windermere Environmental Assessment Worksheet Update. Michael, welcome back.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. So this is a Windermere E A W update. So D.R. Horton and Minnesota Westwood Professional Services, W S B and the city, worked together to prepare a submittal for an environmental assessment worksheet, E A W. Update for the Windermere development. It includes updated information on Windermere and how it relates to the previously approved two thousand and six E A W for the bluffs of Marystown. So the overall area of the original project was three hundred and twenty-two point nine eight acres. Commercial development was just over ten acres. There were four hundred and seventy single-family lots and four hundred and fifty-six units of multifamily development for an overall density of three point five one units per acre. The Windermere development as currently proposed is comprised of twelve point eight three acres of commercial development, so slightly more, five hundred and ninety single-family lots, and, which is more, and three hundred and fifty units of multifamily, which is less. So the overall density, however, is four point three units per acre. This incorporates the Windermere South development, which has a proposed density of three point oh four units per acre, which is consistent with the comprehensive plan guiding for this area and is mandated by the Met Council in order to receive approval of a sewer permit for this project. So again, this went to the Met Council. D.R. Horton applied for their sewer permit. They said, wait a minute, this is a two thousand and something E A W. The project's changed. You need to update the E A W, have it adopted and approved by the city council before we will recognize issuance of permits. And they wanted to double-check the density, so you can see the actual density has gone up. They did hold, or were holding, the Windermere South permit because the original calculation, it was two point nine dwelling units per acre. We've had a recent change in internal policy on how we look at outlots for drainage, so now we include them in lots to make sure they don't go into tax foreclosure. Met Council had not looked at that. They were counting it as an independent lot. So they were looking at really large, single-family lots, which in reality, they're not buildable. They recalculated that through this E A W process, and they now meet the minimum, which is three dwelling units an acre. So here was the original E A W aerial plan for the E A W. So two thousand and six bluffs at Marystown, this was kind of the layout that was approved as part of the E A W. This is the plan we're looking at today. Significantly more green space, if you look at the two. And that was another change. We had a discussion with the Met Council. Their rules have changed as far as bluffs and trees. And D.R. Horton's made a pretty significant area to create this trail system with a park system connected to it through the project, and that has changed the densities. But at the end of the day, there are actually one extra dwelling unit per acre because of projects like B H S and the apartment project that was recently approved. So action requested tonight is to approve resolution R twenty eighteen zero ninety-seven, a resolution issuing a negative declaration for the need for an environmental impact statement for the Windermere development. And this will then move forward on to both the Met Council and the state for final approval.
Questions of staff? Counselor Lehman?
I'll offer resolution R two eighteen dash zero nine seven, resolution issuing a negative declaration for the need for the environmental impact statement for the Windermere development.
Counselor Luce?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counselor Lehman?
The one question I had is, and you put it on the screen, but I didn't see it in the packet, that. The teal-blue, that's commercial?
The teal-blue is, up in this corner is, let me get this sort of work. This is the commercial area.
Yep, and when I'm looking at O six scenario two compared to twenty eighteen proposed, the commercial, neighborhood commercial went from twenty-eight thousand to sixty-three thousand, so jog my memory.
So we'll go back to, so the original commercial development, the Blessed Marytown had ten point three nine acres of commercial development. We're now at twelve point eight three acres of commercial development, so slightly more commercial development in this plan.
Well, these numbers more than doubled for square feet.
Twenty-eight to sixty-three.
Right. And, well, it doesn't have a page number. What page is that?
Well, you're looking at a different table. I'm looking at page four.
I'm looking at page seven.
Two different tables, same thing.
Same thing, two different tables. So I'm wondering if, if it went, if it only changed by two acres from ten to twelve, how did the square feet more than double?
Square footage of the commercial space?
Yes.
We'll ask Mr. Sewell to verify this, but originally, it was more shopping center kind of oriented. Today, you're seeing, there's a daycare center building, so not a lot of parking, but a bigger building. And they're talking to some of the commercial users where it'll be not a whole lot of parking, but a big building because of the type of use. So before, it was more kind of neighborhood, excuse me, neighborhood retail, and I think these are more service-oriented businesses.
Mr. Sewell, do you have a comment on this question?
If you go back to the O six plan, the commercial is spread out more along Highway thirteen, and because of the bluff impacts and such, the buildings are farther apart.
Highway thirteen.
Counselor Mokel?
I also believe that we're counting Spuck now as part of the commercial development, if I'm looking at the colors correctly. The Spuck building?
Oh, yes, yes. Spuck's part of the commercial. Oh, yes, yes. Spuck's part of the commercial.
It's a booster station, is it?
If you look up here, this is all classified as commercial back in '06, and the commercial land went up into the bluff area. So the acreage is sound bigger, but so much of it was in the bluff that you really, you couldn't develop quite a bit of square footages. So that's why our square footages are much different than what you see with the acres. Our current plan's more efficient. It puts it in the corner where the ground's more usable. So that's, that's the difference. Does that make sense to you?
Mayor and Council, if you look at their current plan versus the one we just showed, this was all commercial originally. And this is all preserved area now. So it's either walking trails or it's bluff preservation.
But the commercial has doubled from '06.
Understand, but if, if you...
I'm not complaining. I'm just trying to see where exactly did it grow in size? Besides the booster station, I understand that.
Booster station, but we're using more of the acreage with building coverage. If you look at the '06, it was, there was more room in between the building because of the contours, the grades, the bluffs. The gas line went through it. We relocated the gas line as part of this project, what we didn't plan to do back in '06. So we're more, we're more efficient in our commercial land now than when we had.
So it's actual footprint, is what you're telling me, instead of space?
The acreage got just a little bit bigger, but we were able to use more of it with actual footprint of buildings.
And again, the buildings are not your typical retail. They are children's care, daycare, whatever you like to call it, but they're a pretty big footprint with not a whole lot of parking because people just come and drop their children off and leave.
Right. Okay.
Other questions? Thank you very much. Questions? There's a motion on the table and a second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Moving ahead then to 10B4, Comprehensive Plan Amendment for former city hall site from institutional to mixed use. Michael, welcome back.
So Mayor and Council, this is a pretty straightforward comp plan change. So this is the city hall site, which you can see is identified as institutional in the 2030 comp plan. The proposal is to have it go to mixed use. Current 2030 comp plan, anticipated eventual redevelopment. In fact, there's a whole discussion in the 2030 comp plan that city hall would eventually be demolished and the city would move to a new campus. The adjacent land use on First and also across homes is mixed use. And the planning commission recommended, from a land use standpoint, four to zero to change it to mixed use.
This change would match what's all around it. Is that correct?
So Mayor and Council, all of the purple, if I can get this to work, all this purple color is mixed use. This is all mixed use. This is all mixed use. And at the planning commission, they had a discussion on whether it should be commercial, which is the salmon color, or mixed use. And their thought was it made more sense to make this kind of a square of mixed use.
If this were to stay institutional, what could be built there?
It would have to be an institutional use. So post office, government building. So the zoning is currently B3. Yes.
Questions of staff? Questions of staff? Okay, thank you. Counselors? Counselor Whiting?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution R 2018-102, approving a comprehensive plan amendment to re-guide property at 129 Home Street, Shakopee, to mixed land use.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Mokel. Discussion? Discussion. It's a great opportunity to match other zoning downtown. Also, I feel like the commercial for this site, if we're gonna redevelop it, obviously it can't stay institutional. Obviously, we saw earlier a proposal for some 13 million dollars to get this thing going. You know, this is a big, much different setup than what happened at the old fire hall years ago. But Counselor Whiting?
Whether us as members of the council agreed with the TIF plan or not, I think, no matter what we do, the mixed use, land use for this area is, is important. I think, you know, having that commercial with residential on top is a good use. I don't know how long we've had the mixed use. Do you remember, Matt, how long that's been part of our zoning? But it, it fits a downtown area.
Actually, the mixed use gave some landowners down along 101 some additional flexibility.
Right. They were non-conforming for a long time, so.
Well, they were illegal, non-conforming.
Right.
And they couldn't get mortgages, and then the city was complaining they wouldn't fix their properties up, but they couldn't because they couldn't get a mortgage loan, so they couldn't get a loan.
Fix their water heaters.
They had to make them legal conforming. During that discussion, we talked about a mixed use, which would give developers that wanted to buy private property on the open market, the ability to put together a plan and just basically walk into the city and say, here's what I'm thinking. What do you think? And it would open up, you know, a lot of different options. I can't remember. I think it was like '08, maybe?
Yeah, it's been around. But I mean, it, it seems like a good fit for downtown.
Counselor Luce? Motion on the table with a second. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion is three to two. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Counsel, this does require a two-thirds vote, so the motion would fail. The dissenting council members should state on their record the reasons why they're voting for this because the statute requires, although the city's the applicant here, that's correct, Mr. Kurski, right? The city is the applicant. That a final decision just has to be made in 60 days, and you have to state the reasons for the denial. And so there's two council members opposing it, so they should state, just on the record, so the record's clear, the reasons for opposing the action.
Counselor Luce? Well, we'll start down here. Counselor Luce, just speak into the mic and state your objections.
The density and the height, the amount of the TIF.
That's not what we're discussing here.
This is a...
That's what we're gonna end up with.
This is a rezoning. Counselor Lehman?
From my perspective, I'm, I'm looking at the surrounding uses, and the majority of mark, or commercial use, at least the majority of a specific building, commercial use. They may have a couple of apartments on top. And I'm afraid that what this mixed use is, could potentially allow, and it probably should be a little more clarity put on, what, what mixed use actually means. But if, when I look at surrounding uses, we want to make sure that what we're doing fits into the surrounding uses, matches the surrounding uses, enhances the surrounding uses, and aren't actually a detriment to the surrounding uses. So from my perspective, I think we need to have a better conversation on defining mixed use in general. And I, I think from the standpoint of '08, the, the concept was more of a commercial use, but leaving, leaving it open-ended compared to the types of commercial uses. At least that's what my feeling was at the time when we adopted it. So I guess I'd like to see a little more discussion on what exactly mixed use means, because...
We, we have a definition. I think we wanted more commercial, but also we wanted envisioned maybe even some townhomes along the riverfront there, along 101, at least on the north side. To leave this industrial, I don't think it, we, we have apartments already downtown. This, you know, we can talk about the livability of it, but I think, I think to leave this as institutional where there's only a couple specific.
Mayor and Council, I mean, the planning commission, it could either go mixed use or commercial. I mean, leaving institutional, from a land use standpoint, as Mr. Thompson said, doesn't make any sense. And I think it's gotta be one or the other because of the surrounding uses. Because I don't think we're moving the post office here, because that's the other institutional property. So mixed use or commercial, they really didn't have a preference one way or the other.
More comment?
Would you approve a commercial use on this site?
Pass away. Let's, let's see the proposal.
Well, we have a...
We're, we're just guiding it. We're not creating proposals.
Yeah, I, you've got a proposal that you already approved on, on a site. I mean, you kind of got it backward, but whatever.
Well, mixed use.
So this, this is paying back...
Whether it's commercial or residential or some other use that's allowed in mixed use, we already have a use identified.
Like I said, what exactly is mixed use? Is it anything?
So you'd rather leave it on the, on the, off the tax rolls and do nothing?
No, I, I, I guess a better discussion, you know, we actually spent like four months having a discussion on what our vision actually was. And there was a lot of compromise and, and consensus built. We actually had five zero consensus of this council of what we were actually trying to accomplish, and we never followed it.
Well, and here we are, though, on a site.
We are on a site with a proposal...
Surrounded by mixed use and commercial.
With a proposal that is at least five times higher than anything we've ever talked about.
Yeah, we have a higher density in our community, a half a block away, two blocks away from this.
We talked about 44 with all these bells and whistles of transportation and walking within a quarter mile and these types of things. We talked about five, 10 acres scattered throughout decentralization, and we haven't followed most of that, so.
Counselor Whiting?
So what we're talking about is that we have spent money on demolishing the, the city hall site. We understood because of the conditions, it needed to go. Right now, it's a vacant lot. We're, we're gonna be talking about develop, finishing that hole in, in the concrete alleyway that we have been talking about fixing with some of the, this use. This is a site that's not generating any tax money right now and will be generating, whether it go towards that project or whether eventually will go into the coffers of the city, the tax base. What, this is, this proposal here is talking about what we use for the, the comprehensive plan and how we adjust it to either commercial or mixed use, which fits the area down in that area, right around it, surrounded by either one of those.
And I'm not convinced a parking lot isn't a good idea for this site, to be honest with you.
So you're willing to invest more of the taxpayers' money?
Well, let's, let's really break that down. Are we, how, how many calls for city services, county services, and school services there, are there on that property today?
None.
How many could there be under a proposal, you know, 160, 200 people living there?
You base your zoning off of how many police calls?
No, I, I'm basing it on, I'm basing it on what, what are we looking to do for the surrounding areas?
Benefit the surrounding area, our historic downtown.
Enhancing downtown.
There's a vision between a need for parking, and there's a vision by this body, 5O, for decentralization, five to 10 acre, 28 units per acre, maximum 44. What happened to your vision?
Counselor Michael?
Mayor and Council, I think we're way out of bound, this is the land use discussion. You only have two real options legally here. It can either be mixed use or it can be commercial. Or you can leave it institutional, which means it has to have an institutional use. I will say back that, and we've had this discussion before, council member, that something on this site, whatever it is, we're still gonna plow the roads and shovel the sidewalks, whether it's a parking lot or a building. So that use goes away. The building will be fully sprinkled, so from a fire demand standpoint, it's pretty low. Typically, these buildings have excessive security, so there are not a lot of calls for service for the police. So from a taxpayer standpoint, not a lot of, the county did not object to this project. The school district, they're very, because of these unit mixes, there's very few of any school children that go there. So I think it comes down to whether it's two stories, four stories, do you want a commercial project or a mixed use project on this site, or you want to leave it a parking lot? Those are your three choices.
Yep, good conversation to have.
I have a question for our city attorney in regard to zoning. We're supposed to follow very strict criteria in denial or approving. Do we have to talk about those, those criteria that's used, either in a positive sense or in a negative way?
Well, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Counsel, the action before you is actually the comp plan amendment, not the zoning. So the two council members who voted against it have stated on the record why they did it. That's the only requirement. Now, I, I will say that, so the reason why this is here is because of the same reason the other one was here a little while ago, is that there's a statute in the Metropolitan Land Planning Act that says your land use plan and your zoning should be consistent. Doesn't say what happens if they're not, and there's reasonable minds differ on what the outcome is. So based on the action tonight, this property is still gonna be zoned B3, and it's gonna have an inconsistent land use designation in the comp plan. What that means, I can't exactly predict right now, but I just wanted to make you aware of the fact that the zoning is still the zoning. That hasn't changed.
All right. Thank you all very much. Moving ahead then to 10B5, award of a contract to SFR for a AUAR for West Shakopee and Jackson Township. My call.
Again, Mayor and Council, so this is a alternative urban area-wide review or an AUAR. So in discussions with the Met Council and the county, we currently have an orderly annexation agreement in place. They are concerned about eventual traffic impacts, sewer, et cetera, impacts on this area. As development moves forward, as the case was with Windermere, they had to do an EAW. They do not want to see EAWs and EISs for this entire area, one at a time. They have requested that the city, in cooperation with the county and the Met Council and all the various utilities, work on an AUAR for basically this area. So this is the one area currently that's under an EAW. This would, blue area would be, be the AUAR area. It includes some areas currently within the city. Next to Jackson School, there's a site that we annexed in with an old house on it and a piece of property the school district has sold. They want that area include, included. There are some areas in E and F and C that have some vacant land and that the people already have been talking about future development on. So they would like an AUAR completed. These are the tasks required by statute to do an AUAR. So it's everything from various development scenarios, land use, lot coverage, fish and wildlife, and ecologically sensitive resources. And in fact, they've already identified that in the bluff area, there is a endangered B that we'd have to take into account. Water use, water surface area, there is flooding that occurs in this area today and how that will be dealt with going in the future. Water quality, erosion, sedimentation, geologic hazards and soil conditions, solid waste and storage tanks, traffic, dust, sensitive resources, visual impacts, and on and on. So all of these would have to be included in the AUAR. Some much more in-depth than others. So the benefits, it will allow development to move forward without an EAW or EIS if it is substantially in compliance with the development scenarios. It will define what mitigations required, and will be reimbursed by recapture fee by ordinance. So it can be done on a lot or by acre. There are cities that have passed the ordinance. So basically, when projects come in, they are charged an AUAR fee by ordinance that reimburses the city since they do not have to go through an EAW or EIS.
Counselor Whiting?
Do we have that in place now?
Mayor and Council, we do not. We will bring forward, this will be about a sixth to eighth month. six to eighth month, six to eight month process, and we'll bring forward an ordinance to get reimbursed.
If something like that doesn't go through, would the township be sharing the costs of this?
Uh, no, this is based on the fact that the city will be annexing this in. So, one of the concerns the Met Council brought up was sewer capacity in the area long-term, road capacity. The county's currently doing that bridge project. They are concerned about eventual traffic impacts in this area. And so, they said they would like to get ahead of the curve and work with the county, so we don't have issues going down the road where development is stalled for years while they work on sewer and water issues. So, I think, Spuck, we've had discussions with them. There are power issues in this area that will be addressed as part of this, and they're looking for a potential new substation so they can include that in this process. So, it could be included in the AUAR, so they don't have to do their separate environmental impact.
Counsel Lehman?
Mayor, I read in the document that it's gonna look at existing land uses and the 2040 proposed land uses in this study. And one of the questions I have is, since we, as a body, haven't really looked at and talked in detail about the land uses that are proposed for 2040, if, how do you study for a land use that may potentially change, and then would you have to do the study again?
So, Mayor and Counsel, they'll look at several different proposals. So, the current land use that the county is showing, and the township has, the current land use the city has on the property today, future land uses. So, they'll look at a number of scenarios because they want to see what has the biggest impact, and that's what they're rated on. So, that whole area along 69, which I think in our 2030 plan didn't guide it because we didn't have an orderly annexation, we looked at that as a potential employment area, and that's what I believe it is showing in the 2040 plan. If that were developed as single-family homes, what would be the impact of that? And so, they will look at those different scenarios. So, it's not necessarily the specific 2040 plan. They'll look at several plans. Because I think the Met Council said, if it all becomes single-family home, is what happens to traffic and sewer, because they have a much larger impact.
Second question is, the development to go all the way out to 41 or to the edge of Jackson Township, is anybody's guess how long that's gonna take? I mean, it depends on the market conditions and stuff. So, theoretically, you could do this study, and maybe it takes twenty years, maybe it takes less, maybe it takes longer. How long is this study good for?
So, Mayor and Counsel, you just saw, without actually spending very much money, we just updated that EAW, which was done in 2006, I believe. So, that was good for twelve years. This will probably be good for ten to fifteen years.
So, we'll be redoing it before development actually gets out that far, probably?
I would say, based on the county's anxiety and the number of phone calls that they're getting and comments that they're getting, that we will see development sooner than later.
You think all of that's gonna develop in ten years?
I think, their concern is when that bridge comes across, it's gonna completely change the dynamic in this area, and we're not gonna be prepared. And you're gonna see all this development, and we're gonna spend years in EISs and EAWs. And if you had the AUAR in place, you could at least see what the worst-case scenario is for impacts.
Well, I'll go on the record saying, if that bridge makes that whole area develop, we're gonna need bigger bridges across the river.
Mr. Thompson?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, let me just supplement something Mr. Kirsty said. This is a little different than an EAW because it's an AUAR, and by statute, it's only good for five years. You can supplement it and change it, but there's a little different rules on this than an AUAR. So, the timing could be more of an issue, but you can supplement it. Thought I'd clarify that.
Update that. And then, you know, I still think this is truly part of long-term planning.
So, they will be looking at the 2040 capacity for roads, sewer, water, electricity, because that's what the Met, there's a, they won't tell us what it is, but the Met Council has a turning point somewhere in that area, and they want to see when that's really gonna occur. And I think it will require them to acquire another site in that area for a future sewage plant, which they talked about.
Our community did a, one of these back a long time ago on the, on the east end, I believe. Is that correct? Mr. Salto, didn't we do one?
Yep.
Yep.
EAW?
Yep.
EAW?
Come to the mic. I'm sorry. I, these are not, these are rare.
I want to say we did our original one in 2006 or something like that, and I think we updated it after that.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah. And we also did an EAW before that. So, we've done all of ours privately, just to fill the record.
Okay.
Again, this is a much larger area with a lot more resources that'll be impacted.
Questions of staff? Questions of staff? If not, thank you. You have, I'm sorry, you have more to your presentation.
Yep.
I'd like a motion to approve a contract with SRF Consulting Group Incorporated for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to complete the AUAR of Shakopee's west end and the Jackson Township with an approximate nine-month completion.
Counselor Luce?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. 10B6, resolution calling for a public hearing for bond issuance for VHS. Staff, who present? My call.
Mayor and Counsel, this is, we have our attorney here, but this is just calling for the public hearing. If you remember, you all have done similar issuances for St. Francis and for the hospital that's adjacent to them. This is a way that we act as a conduit, does not affect our credit rating or bonding authority, since it's based on their real estate and their revenue. Ms. Eddington will be happy to answer any specific questions.
Questions of staff or our bond counsel? Counselor, my call?
I'll make a motion adopting resolution number R2018-099, calling for a public hearing regarding the issuance of revenue bonds under Minnesota State Statutes, Chapter 462(c), as amended, and providing preliminary approval to the issuance to finance multifamily housing developments, including nursing and assisted living facilities for Benedictine Living Community of Shakopee LLC.
Second. I have a motion. Counselor Luce?
Second.
Second. Discussion?
I have a question.
Counselor Lehman?
Can we give preliminary approval, approval prior to the public hearing?
We're just issuing the public hearing.
Right, but this says preliminary approval.
Oh. Bond counsel?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. Julie Eddington with Kennedy and Graven. Yes, that's why we call it preliminary. So, you're providing preliminary approval to the bonds, you're calling a public hearing for September, and you're also providing some reimbursement intent for VHS to start incurring capital costs for the project.
So, if the preliminary hearing goes really, really bad, then we can say, no, we don't want to do this?
If you have a public hearing and you decide you do not want to issue the conduit bonds, then we would not proceed.
Okay.
Other questions? Counselor Luce?
This is something we sorely need, so I don't see any pushback on it, so.
These are not GO bonds. These are limited revenue bonds based off the facility, not GOs over the city. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, you are correct. The bonds are solely the obligation of VHS. They'll have a mortgage. They'll provide other security to the bondholders directly. If, for some reason, there was a problem with the, the project, the city would have no obligation. It also, the issuance of these bonds and any default related to these bonds does not have any impact on the city's credit rating when they do go and do their own GO bonds. And it's also important to note that these bonds do impact bank qualification. The city isn't doing any GO bonds this year, so this is a perfect time for the city to issue these bonds this year. Next year, the city is considering their own GO bonds, so we will not be doing conduit bonds next year.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
This is the same of what we did with St. Francis when they did their campus, correct?
Yes, Mr. Lehman, Councilmember Lehman, that's correct.
I think you were here for that, weren't you?
I was.
All right. Other questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion on the table and a second. Further discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move forward. 11A, city bill list for everybody's review. 11B, liaison report. Counselor Lehman?
I have none.
All right. Thank you. I have a, I guess I have one item that, a week ago, I attended the independent school district's presentation on their enrollment estimate, estimates, and asked Bill Reynolds to send everybody out that presentation. Interesting couple charts in there that I found, that housing starts and student enrollment go in opposite directions. If you look on that chart, very interesting. I talked to the president of the company that did that study, and he said if there is any correlation between housing starts and student enrollment, he says he hasn't seen one in twenty-five years. Also, it made mention that apartments impacting our school district was less than, I think, sixteen percent. And the five-year projection for our school district was plus four hundred over the, over the next five years, and based off of eight thousand enrollment, whatever, pretty small number, actually, even given the growth. And they had all our projects listed. Of course, we do have some projects that were on that list that are in a different school district, so. But I found the, you know, watching those demographic studies are kind of important. I encourage you guys all to read the, look at that report again. Counsel Lehman?
Mayor, did they, did they happen to tell you what the capacity is and what the current number of pupils to each school is that they're at right now?
No, they didn't. They had, they, it was just pure enrollment. They-
You might want to take a look at them numbers.
So. But that was my report. Counselor Whiting?
Uh, thank you. On the seventeenth, I attended the canvassing board for the mayor's, in lieu of the mayor. I do have those results. If you guys want a copy of that or take a look at that, I have them for you. Also, today, I was available to sit with the, having a swearing-in of a new officer in town. We're gonna have a few more of those coming up. Some folks have retired and moved on to better things, so look for those announcements coming up. But police force is changing, and it's all for the good. That's all I have.
Counselor, my call?
I had none, Mayor.
Thank you very much. The highlight, the administration report?
Uh, just a few things, Mr. Mayor and Members of the Council. First of all, I'd like to give a shout-out of thanks to those individuals who've been working hard on our Shakopee Adopt a Pop-Up Flower Garden. If you haven't been down to Yuba Park and seen what the volunteers have done there, it's really, it's really something. And that's Jody Brennan, Corky Mars, Deb Adnenson, Lynn Schimmel, Don McNeil, and Lynette Holman, all who've done great voluntary work out there. Sincerely appreciate that. Beers with Bill, which is the chance to ask questions of the administrator, grill us and some members of staff that will be there as well. If you have questions, please come. If you have complaints, please, please come. We don't know unless you come and tell us. If you want to say that we're doing great things, come to the Saturday morning coffees, because that's normally when I get the complaints, and, you know, it'd be nice to balance, balance that out a little bit. But again, that's six to seven PM Thursday, August 23rd, at the Shakopee Brew Hall. And then finally, yesterday afternoon, both the city engineer and myself and members of all the cities and the county worked together, which I believe we have finally finalized after about two years of work off and on, the county cost participation policy for transportation projects. Both Mr. Lilyhog and I did not get everything we wanted. We, we both looked at things probably a lot different than the majority of other members of the county and other cities did. However, I can say that we had a very spirited discussion and, on all the issues, and I was very happy that we could finally get together and talk about them. And that is something that I feel comfortable with at this point, and I believe Mr. Lilyhog does too, based on my conversations with him. And what, what this will do is, it'll bring several things to us. One, we'll have some certainty when it comes to costs for projects that we're involved with, with the county, as opposed to, you know, swagging it, which is kind of what happens right now. We'll actually know what the participation percentages are. The other piece of that is, is it's equal. We're gonna have the same as Prior Lake. We're gonna have the same as Elko New Market. And it's not gonna be based upon who happens to be in positions there, but we're all being treated equally and fairly, which is another thing I think is incredibly important. So, that will be coming forward to be passed by the county, I believe, in September. And then I will, as soon as we get the finalized version of that, I will get that out to everybody as well. But I think it's a good thing for all of us. And like I said, didn't get everything we wanted, but at least we had a, a good conversation on the issues, and we're able to come into a consensus with everyone in the county on those issues. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Counselor Lehman, 11, or item 12. Counselor Lehman?
I have no other business.
I have no other business.
I have no other business.
Somebody make a motion. Counselor, my call?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to September 4th, 2018 at seven PM.
I have a motion. Second, finally. Counsel Whiting, further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? We are adjourned at 9:46.